We're calling this to board. We're calling. Okay. On?
Yeah.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the central liberty and justice of all. And what is your pleasure with the consent agenda?
So I think I will move to accept the minutes as presented. The warrant is on its way.
Ready? Seconded? Any discussion on the minutes? In favor of approval of the minutes? And while we wait for the rest of the warrant, the next board selectmen, excuse me, the next select board meeting will be September 19th at 5:30 here at the town hall. And I want to skip ahead to select board comments and announcements because I know that people have been concerned. We have a separation agreement with Christine Coland that is available for the public, should you wish to examine it. We are paying her for another couple of months for the agreement. And we are now going to be able to search for a new town administrator.
I have another comment separate from that if you want to.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So this is in reference to our last meeting with a payment that had not been paid to one of our contractors that I reached out to to let her know that we were sorry for being late in his payment. And he sent me a note. So Suzanne, thank you for reaching out the other day. You gave me an update on the payment status for the Foster Point Culver. As much as we like to see payments within 14 days, we anticipate a 30-day requisition period due to the time it takes to process. We also understand the town needs to allow for enough time for inspection work to complete. And if there are any deficiencies, the town has a recourse for correction. As taxpayers, it's important to make sure work is performed correctly and inspected in a timely manner to make sure our investments are protected. At the same time, we need a good relationship with our contractors to satisfy invoices in a reasonable timeframe. We here at Midcoast Excavation Incorporated appreciate the business, your business, and look forward to working with you in the future. So they were fine with our status and actually suggested that we keep that to allow a timeline to review all work that's done.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes.
Suzanne, one thing you said is you pay every two weeks, except this last period of time since the last meeting has been four weeks. Just a comment.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to propose that we change from old business first to new business so that Josh can take care of what he needs to do with the mill rate and then that we let you go home. Unless, of course, you wish to stay.
No.
To the very bit around.
That would be great.
It's only five to the draw for Josh.
I don't mind if I can use whatever. It'll be kind of the thing. So yeah, thank you very much.
You've got papers more.
Sure, so I've got just some paper for you with three proposed mill rates.
Okay.
But just to kind of give a quick little recap of what we've been working on, if it'd be helpful for the audience and everybody here. For the last month and a half to two months, we've really been focusing on basically catching up the accessory agent work for the town for the last year. So we've caught up all the fees for the past year. We've entered all the permit work that needed to be done. We processed all of the personal property that had come in and certainly the abatement applications that were at the forefront when we first came here. So it's been a lot of work just in the last six weeks. Looking at, let me pass these out to you. So some of the projected mill rates, it does look like expenses have increased this year for the town. So based on your current value
Thank you.
and budgeted expenses, it looks like we'd be going for a mill rate of around 815. That's with a fairly low overlay with a mill rate of 820. This, at this stage of the game, as the mill rate increases, the only thing that changes is the overlay, which is this number here. And then I also have a projection for you with an 825 mill rate.
Could you call up the overlay for those?
Yeah. I'm trying to say. Oh, you'll call up the overlay that you said.
Correct.
Okay, so for the mill rate before 815, the overlay would be $43,853.3. For the 820, the overlay for that is $79,729.31. And for the 825, the overlay would be $115,605.60.
Thank you.
So our overlay last year was $106,000, of which $53,000 went towards the abatement process to give us a utilization of the overlay.
Is that Julie's accounting from today?
I believe it is.
It is. We did confirm that number.
Okay, and so I guess for those that are here and for those that are listening, there's two significant increases that we had this year. We went up over $100,000 in county tax. And the school went up over almost a half million dollars in their budget year-over-year growth as well. So that, those two numbers in itself, you're looking at a significant increase in the, for paying the money out for that, for the school and for the county. So trying to determine why it's up, that's two of the major reasons why we've seen an increase in tax.
What was last year's mill rate? I'll show my numbers.
68.
Thank you.
And we did see a loss in revenue as well of a couple hundred thousand dollars. So that plays a big part in it too.
What do you think that came from?
Just projected revenues that the town, you know, so it usually suggests that maybe the projected revenues last year
Were higher than, right.
Yeah, and this is more of a.
A more accurate figure.
Yeah.
David, you?
What, you know what those projected revenues that tell $20,000 of shop were?
It was actually put together by the auditor and Julie.
So you can prove this.
She's been in contact with her.
Yeah. He helped with determining what
Right.
what would be a good projection. And there is money at his recommendation from undesignedated in that as well. I think the town used eight or 900,000 last year to help with that. And this may be the big, I'm not, I'm just.
No, no, I'm just. You're being very helpful. So I'm just, thank you.
He recommended not to use as much this year.
Yeah.
So we have half a million dollars in undesignedated.
Versus the 800,000 from last year.
I believe that's what it was, but.
What do we have for new valuation?
The total valuation of real estate
So we picked up this year, you know?
So we actually lost that this year in real estate.
Because of the inflated values.
Because of the values. So from the permits we entered, we gained about six or seven million dollars in value. But net, we're, we lost three.
Because of the rebuild.
The rebuild, the inflated waterfront land.
We also lost a bit in personal property. One, one business in particular, I meant to look up the name. They moved out a million dollar piece of wood in the town. So that was wiped right off the board. So we're kind of down in a lot of areas, unfortunately.
Except up in taxes.
Right, that's what goes up in that case. It's the tax, the mill rate makes up the difference.
So do we have an estimate of what we're going to need for overlay for abatements for this year? We've got the, do we know how many of the stabilization properties are actually waterfrontage? Did you have a chance to have a look at that?
We looked at them, but to try to make adjustments is very difficult on those.
Right.
I, I would err on the side of caution. You know, I would, I think it would be a wise idea to keep your overlay a little, I don't want to say padded, but you know, maybe keep that in consideration with future abatements, sure.
Right. David?
I'm not one to promote a high overlay, but we had 260 properties in stabilization last year. And I'm sure all those people may not look at the taxes that closely because they were the same number.
Right.
This coming October, August, they may look at no close. So I would not go the lowest overlay this year. Maybe in the middle to leave a little pinch in case those numbers don't work out in favor again.
That's kind of what I, where I'm thinking. Where are?
After all the abatements we had just gone through, I originally started at an 830 mill rate. So we pared it down a little bit. Just, just thinking of that, you know, because we not, you know, we lose a lot this year.
Well, and the properties that were mostly affected were those on the waterfront. That's how the significant change in value.
Yeah.
Well, that's just thought that were misclassified as deep water.
Right.
And that's where I think not all of the stabilized properties are on deep water, is my point.
No.
So I understand where you're coming from, David, from that perspective, but of the 260, I think we had dragged a third of them in this process. Complete, a third of the stabilized properties.
But how many properties was that, 30?
56. We had 56 abatements and I think maybe five didn't have a waterfront.
But we also have two of the 60 properties that are part of that tax program.
But right, about a third of those were the abatement. But, right, yes. And the ones of the remaining properties in the stabilization programs, they're not all waterfront, which thoughts, that's where the significant delta were coming from.
All I'm saying is we should be a little cautious this year.
If we, if we went for the, rounded up to 80,000, that then went through the 8.2 mill rate, that would give us about $80,000 in overlay. Which should cover us.
Which is essentially another $40,000 over what we were projecting at the 815. And we only, I think we only, in this year, did 53,000 in total for every property that came through that was the value that was made it back. But we allocated 106 to that, so we cut that in half.
My concern is that with, with as many properties as were overvalued, that more people are going to take a very careful look. There were people who did have waterfrontage who did not apply for an abatement last year. I'm familiar with some. And those folks are going to have a look. So I think we need to be more, a lot more flexibility than we would have otherwise. The difference in total tax bill between 815 and 820 is not going to be crippling for most of us. But.
Don't say that.
But it's, it could cause some of us elderly people of fixed incomes a little bit of a help. But I think we need to allow the town the flexibility to be able to make those payments in a timely manner and to have the people sitting at this board not worried. And have Julie have not so many sleepless nights as she's had this past year. So I'm, yeah.
Imagine, and it's for your point, even folks who will not file an abatement, the jump is enough that your cash flow may be strangled in terms of the receipt of the funds you need to continue to operate the town.
Right, right, right. Yeah, there may be people who pay, make partial payments, just have full payments.
Have to scrape for the rest.
David?
You mentioned Julie. I hope this board will thank Julie in more ways than one.
Absolutely.
And take care of all the hours she put into this town and keep it going for these last two or three months.
She's a plenty of lead.
And she'd be right about that and really applaud it for her efforts.
I believe there have been conversations about town, not just between you and me, but among other people. As to next year's tax, next year's, yes, I'm thinking. Next year's town meeting warrant, we should raise money enough for her to have a bonus.
Yes.
She's done at least double to me and has served at least a quarter of a town administrator. So.
And will continue to do so for some time.
That will, that needs to be rewarded. And thanks, thanks are lovely, but something you can take to the grocery store to compensate for your time is also very.
She should just know the town appreciates her efforts.
Yeah, well, and I'm not opposed to using some of our contingency fund now and some later as well. I don't think she should have to wait a full year to get paid for what she's doing right now, also.
And while Watsons were, in my opinion, fairly compensated for doing the building pickup and I believe Josh is being fairly compensated as the appraisers, they stepped into the breach, they did it in a limited timeframe where they told you they would get it done. And Josh has stepped into a quad mic where he has remained competent, pleasant, and quite a miracle. So while there may not be financial compensation as Julie, who's been doing four jobs, I would like to get that in to this conversation. And thank you for permitting me to speak in favor of Josh sharing here physically. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Yes.
I will take that back to the office.
And so they can as well.
Josh, thank you.
So I'm going to move. And we could, it might even be beneficial if we put something in writing, Josh, so you can show your company.
Right.
That'd be great.
Like a post-it, like this day.
You get to pick color.
Okay, so I'm going to move that we set the mill rate at 820. I second that? I took the breath. With the overlay of $79,729.31.
I second it again?
Is there further discussion? Yes, I see your faces and I agree. Okay, no further discussion, all in favor?
But that's the, that's the original right there.
And vote is three. Okay.
Thank you for your efforts, Josh.
No, my pleasure.
You walked into a pile of something that you were able to straighten out.
Very, the town has provided me with all the resources I needed to be successful, so I appreciate that.
Well, and we talked about, you know, just having some processes put in place to keep us on track of the future. I think you've got some great ideas on how to help us maintain that strategy.
We also need to approve this.
Yeah, there's two, there's two.
The certificate and the.
Yeah.
We need to approve that for the commitment. So who do we approve?
There's actually two spots.
Yeah. Who approve the documents for commitment?
The beta commitment.
You say? I'm very likely to have this. I do, they kind of, you will see a ton of. We miss them all. Yeah, I think we have a lot of questions.
We're going to take a break, but then we'll be. If you're ready to roll.
Yeah, because everybody's going along and they've been heard anything that they see wrong. There's still a lot of wrong felt there, so I think it's going to be huge next year. David?
A lot of incentive taxes.
Yes.
It might be appropriate to the board to, again speaking of area representatives and senators, and do something about the low tax reimbursement we get from the state of Maine for schools.
Yes, amen.
55% is not 6%. So I think we should reach out to them at one time and say, look, fair is fair and this is not fair. They brag about 55% of schools. We need around 6%.
Right, right. And people who have big tips. And this at some point, if we handle this forward, it's going to be really newsworthy for everybody to know and understand throughout the state because I don't think a lot of people realize that there's certain coastal towns that only give the 6%, they're not the 50%.
Was it 40 towns you don't, that didn't receive us? Not 40 towns?
An artist, a novice in the community and been going around getting these secrets. They run, no one understands that at all. And I think you're right. We need some real big publicity and anybody in the town has experience with media. And I think, you know, there are representatives need to put that in a forefront.
I can hand that to my platform.
I would also encourage this board to speak with the school board because I believe they have listened to other towns and get some kind of coordinated effort to get this going. And for years and years, they keep telling us they can't do it. A gusher says they can't change it, can't change it. Well.
It's an act of love.
They should start looking to change it. It's long overdue. 6% is crazy compared to 55% of towns.
It seems to me you're the one who get 55% out of your building.
I don't think they do. No.
Okay, so I was, where did I?
Yeah. Is that this one? No? It's got me wrapped in here. It gets all in my stuff here.
All right. Next, I'm on the agenda. Let's, would you like to go home?
I can hang around for as long as you need me.
I think we don't have to stay.
I think we're all set.
Okay.
We love having you.
We don't object to having you stay, but Julie, many people after a long day would like to go home.
That's right.
We have a family.
I have three young ones at home, so I would be happy to throw.
And there goes Julie. She's on her way out too. All right, let's take, let's take a minute. Talk quietly amongst yourselves while we review the current warrant and then we'll get back to you. Can we read the separation?
Just go upstairs, just go upstairs.
I'm reading. Will that be on the website or?
It'll be on the, it won't be on the website, but it will.
We need to come in. Julie, you're still passing.
Julia. Julie.
Are you going?
Well, everything's.
I think we have.
That's what they were saying.
I'm going to kind of start by talking about my individual experience. And a lot of the ones that I've been and I'm a person that's been around to the research is myself, and I'm beginning to know what's a little more injustice in our country. They voice and make. Yeah. It's that somebody can do fun stuff then.
They get certain.
I've always just, it's a good, it's a good. But it's. Time, that was a, yes. And all discussion. One of them tonight, they were wanting to go down the right one. But that kills the day. And yours is long. Right.
It isn't Jesus. No, but you don't. Something like. And just realized.
We have one other.
You do?
I think it's possible. It is, I'm glad to realize we have a wish we have. A very personal, that I'm certain of. Like that, you know. Give it both of the, the stuff that you were.
Take one.
I'll take one. Thank you.
We'll pass them on. Thank you. And they can say we could review these. We didn't do it to you.
It's public domain.
Which entertaining ourselves for you to do your thing.
All right, well, that's good.
Busy work for us.
No, 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 no. It's like Canada. Maybe you spend your time.
That's right.
We've talked about that contract. What is that contract?
A year, 27.
27?
Two years. We should probably start talking to them sooner or later. Because that's something you just pull up thin air.
Then the, the warrant just changed. This town's not.
We still are contracted, but we had.
Okay. David, yes? All right, shall we?
So I move that we accept the warrant as presented.
Seconded? Any further discussion? All in favor of the warrant? The vote is three in paper in that post. All right, so let's go back to old business. Last tiny event, we talked about workshop or setting up a calendar to list off the number of things that have to be. Last tiny event, we talked about a workshop or setting up a calendar to list off the number of things that have to be ready every year and set some potential dates. Have you had a chance to look at what, when we might want to do that? My suggestion would be that we do it sometime before the November election. Because the November will not have the opportunity to have quite so much energy. I was also thinking that we should consult with the school to see what their annual, um, goals are, deadlines are, and what we need to have. So that we have an idea. Have your own meeting and then have one with them or have one with them and then have a second meeting just to make sure you didn't forget. I think it'd be good if we could actually had some suggested dates and asked, asked the school board to join in or. Yeah, I think we have a workshop with them. Yeah. Because I know, I know Julie's asked, um, and we probably want to get in the practice of receiving quarterly estimated expenses so we're not blindsided like we were this year with the significant front loaded expense. And, um, and so that, so that going forward, everybody has the same idea of when things are going to be due, um, just to keep. And just so we know what's coming to have a huge expense. So. We should start the first, if we start the first of October, then that way at the end of October, we're not getting to the election process. So at least try to very beginning. But. I don't, if you guys have a date. I didn't have a date in mind. Um, the first week, we went through, one through four. So the fourth would be a regular meeting. The third may be a meeting.
Yes. I think the school usually needs a third Wednesday.
Third Wednesday, yeah. We don't want to go that far into October.
No. Second week.
We could meet the tenth if they're amenable to that. Or the ninth if that works. If that's a Wednesday, I'm fine doing the ninth if that's important to you better for them. Okay, um, I'll get in touch with Emily in the morning and see if there's a date that she suggests better. And if neither of those dates in the first week will work for, for them, unless Julie just send another note to you. Will that work? Well, if they came the ninth or tenth, we'll move back to the second and third. Yeah. Who gives us a month? Right.
So there, there, the school board meetings, is that what you were concerned about?
Yeah.
So the eighteenth of September, then you know the eighteenth, the sixteenth of October. And the twentieth of November.
We're just trying to figure out what their regular, if we can, with a workshop with them.
Right.
If Wednesdays are better, we can sit with a Wednesday or Thursdays. We're open to either day or Trish like clocked in for.
Well, it looks like they're always on Wednesday, the third Wednesday.
Yeah, I think it's better not to meet during one of the meetings, something I can need to do. Yeah. It shouldn't take, it shouldn't take all that long, an hour and a half, two and a half. But, um, just to get a whole stream of what needs to be done through the town business, municipal and school, so that everybody knows what the potential schedules would be. What a contact. Nine years later, if she finds this up, we could use that. Max is going to be here on item, um, number three on our old business. Max will be here in a while, but he is not here yet. Um, so item number two, discuss and approve language for referendum on town assessor. We have had initial discussions about, um, changing the format of government to, um, change from having the select board act as the board of assessors to having a single assessor. And we asked Kristen from Credit Flaherty to draw up some samples and we have those. The process is that, um, we, as the select board, would vote on language that would be then presented as, as a referendum to the town on, um, in the November, November election. The process then would be if the town chose to change that aspect of town government, the, the single assessor would not take, would not take effect until November of twenty twenty-five. So in the meantime, the select board would still act as the board of assessors. And part of this is that we would approve the language for the ordinance. We would set a date for a hearing. There would be a public hearing on the proposal and then people would vote on it in the November election. Can I explain that clearly now?
So. Awesome. May I ask a question?
Sure.
What's the point of changing?
The point of change, from my perspective, is that having now delved into this now for nine years and faced the difficulties that we faced. Assessing has become a much more technical kind of thing than it used to be when there were eight hundred people, eight hundred different people in town and the properties were pretty much the same value. The complexities of the law and the complexities of real estate evaluation, um, is such that it pretty much takes a professional to know what's happening. So it would simplify things for both the select board and the townspeople if they had the opportunity to talk to somebody who's actually well versed in the law and, and is a practiced assessor. And if they disagree with that person, then they have recourse to the board assessment review, the same as, as currently. But you would skip the step where you go to the select board. In some ways, it's, it's a simpler process and, um, and we actually have people who are professionals in assessing, doing the assessing. So that would be the item four.
Is this a change that's been taken place in other towns?
Yes. There are seated assessors in other towns.
Excuse me?
There are seated assessors in other towns. It's called a seated assessor.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. Because, because of the complexity of, of assessing these days, um, more towns are going to that. Is the word that I have? Am I reflecting that accurately?
I don't know of any other community outside that has moved to a seated assessor. I'm not saying that you're incorrect.
Yeah.
I'm saying as someone who is very involved, I'm not aware of it.
Yeah.
And is this as an employee with set days and time?
And/or contractor. This would be and/or a contractor and, um, it would be a person who would set by, by standards. I think the board, the board would set the contract. The board would set the hours. And that would be that the board would have to make sure, I think, that there was somebody with standard hours who would make themselves available to speak with members of the public who had questions.
And a specific individual, I anticipate Kristen emphasized to you. As a private contractor, you could not set my hours. Pittsburgh has me say that I will target as just Woolwich. But they cannot set my hours or I would not be an independent contractor. So there is no guarantee unless the person is a town employee. And as a private contractor, I could pull any person within my firm and have them come in at any time.
Right.
Now, if that didn't work, when my contract was opt to be renewed, then you'd go back out to ditch. But I will say as a taxpayer, I would be very uncomfortable in a community, not only of our size, but in the quagmire mess disarray that our assessing has been placed to have a contractor as the seated assessor.
So it says, item two, is the assessor may be an employee of the town or maybe an independent contractor working under the written agreement with the town. The select board shall be empowered to enter a contract with assessor for a term no more than two years. So those are, those are the issues. People have asked for that. We had, um, we go to referendum, the people decide. That is. And it's that.
Who has asked for it to be by contract as a seated assessor? I have not heard anyone. I sent you, it could have been a call what you ought to design.
We have, we, and we discussed that here. We've had discussions within the community and so there's, there's. If people don't want to, to change, then people can vote it down.
Why would you be concerned about having an employee? Why would you have the referendum? I can't believe Kristen, she's also Woolwich attorney, so.
Kristen did not.
Recommend a contractor.
Kristen has not recommended either a contractor or an employee.
Why would the board be uncomfortable about having the person be an employee? As a seated assessor?
We're not saying, this is in here too, so I guess it would be a conversation, um.
So it's another version that does not include the possibility of a contractor?
Number three said if the assessor is to be an employee of the town. We would set the hours.
Right.
Right.
The days and the hours.
Right. So that's number three on. That is right. So list both options. Yes. Do you want to see this one?
I'd want to see it if I'm at it.
Does, is that the way that you're reading that now as an employee? Is that how it would fall back like Ronnie do with the assessor?
Yes, yes. It would leave, it would leave the option of either a contractor or an employee. So if you look at the top of the two pages, one is, um, two, five, two, six, five, B, and one's two, five, two, six, five, A. These are two different statutes on how these are written.
There's a huge difference though, and Jane, I think you're answering her much too quickly. Ronnie was an agent. He was an employee.
Right.
But he was an agent. The responsibility remained with the elected selectman. What the referendum would be, a seated assessor, your selectmen have no responsibility and also no authority.
So, you know, I'm sorry, but it seems to me that you guys are pissed off and worried. And so you're gonna jump into this change because you don't want to get irritated about it. And I think that that is totally irresponsible.
That, that was not, that was not the, the intention. It was an idea, seemed like a good idea at the time and see, and, and I still think, I personally still think that is a good idea. And of course, if people don't wish to make that change, then the referendum would fail.
Yeah.
So why not?
So you're depending on the people who know about this, going to work in the town to convince people to learn about it. Because I can tell you, there's a ton of people who don't have a clue what you're talking about. And it's hard, and I, and I still think you're giving the appearance of watching your hands on the whole thing. I, this is hard, I don't want to do the same. I'm gonna be select board member, but I don't want to do this anymore. I think we should just move on to me.
Well. I personally have no, um, as, as an outgoing member of the select board who's not seeking reelection, I, I don't have, as they say, the dog in the fight. What I'm concerned about is having an efficient and effective way for people to have their taxes dealt with, have their assessing dealt with and a smooth process that is easy to follow and it's easy, easy to run. So we don't, we don't just have this conversation. We have it now, we gotta say we're going to do this, we have to have the time to do it. We need to have a hearing before the election. It would be a, a hearing that would be, I would propose, separate from candidate's night. So that there would be two, at least two opportunities for people to make informed decisions. And I don't mean to be cynical, Jane, but people go to the polls and vote on stuff without having a lot of information. All the time. And, and that's, we're very fortunate most of the time that people make the right decisions. So I'm up for trusting the voters to figure out this and decide whether or not they want to make the change or not. There's pros and cons to both sides of it. Um, I don't think any of us are walking away after all that we've gone through on working to finalize and bring the air of fairness of taxation from this revaluation process. We've all been very dedicated in that over the past eighteen months and are grateful it's come to a conclusion. I think that what we're trying to do is make sure that the town is properly addressed path forward. And none of us here have an assessing background. And so we're, we're making decisions on behalf of the town that we don't have the education or training to do that. And that's what we're trying to make sure that we represent the town best way that we can as the select board and as, as elected officials.
But you do recognize, and, and I don't speak for myself because you don't mean to be in any way potentially maligning Woolwich and Pittsburgh, that by their elected selectmen retaining the responsibility, Suzanne, as the assessors and then contracting for an assessors' agent, that that is an oddity. It is not. A small town of our size, going with a seated assessor who might serve by contract and who then you have no control, and yes, I saw the phrase that with due cause you may release. I also realized that there's quite an expense when someone is released from an arrangement with a small town. And you folks were all intimately involved in that. No, I don't have confidence in that being in there. So this is not typical in being on camera and in any way implying to folks listening. I feel this is not to a misleading disservice as it was in Parker appraisal. And you signed that contract and this is where we are. And we are getting into a tax commitment, but we are not through that horror show. We're not entering the sequel to it, you're entering the next phase. So for you to be responding to Jane on camera, that this is the modern way to do it, I will respectfully, but with great clarity, disagree with you for a town this size and in the midcoast area. No, it's not typical. If you had a seated assessor who had set days and hours, well, you might be stepping forward and leading small towns into something new. But not the ambiguity of a contractor as the seated assessor. And as someone who chaired your board assessment review for fifteen years, I will go on record to, to say that the next step then is to the board assessment review is placing a tremendous amount of responsibility on them. If you have a contractor who can have a series of individuals be in the office on whatever day you target. If you have a contractor who can have a series of individuals be in the office on whatever day you target, then you send those people to your board assessment review. You've had, if we, it's not you, us as a community are probably going to have a very hard time maintaining informed and competent and experienced people on the board assessment review. I think you're going to get a lump of traffic than you anticipated. So thank you for letting me speak, but I feel that by saying this is the way it's being done, that that is, is misleading is the contract that was signed with the power of it.
I understand. I don't disagree with you.
Okay, because when Ronnie Deal was a town employee working in the capacity, I don't know the terminology.
As the agent.
As the agent, yeah. Did that work? Do we have problems processing assessments and?
Occasionally.
Okay. But would you think that it would be more efficient in this new way you want to propose it? Or do you think it might be about the same? The second thing is, I, I agree, I mean, I think we're getting into a big kettle of problems if we get ourselves into a contract situation as we've had recently with our town administrator. And I think it's, it has all kinds of chances of going astray. And I think that again, in a format as we have been working previous with Parker Faisal when we had a town employee, gives you the opportunity to be more nimble as a select board. If you have to correct something or make changes, then you're going to, if you advocate all of that responsibility.
Thank you. So we've heard it in public, so what's the, what's the discussion from the board?
You know, I think maybe we should wait here before we jump into this. We're coming out of a, a tax debacle that I think making a change like this today would not be what the town should be looking at in the moment.
I agree, disagree.
One conversation please. Susan. Jen, thank you.
I think we're jumping too fast in this, but I do think we need... Trying to determine.
Just a minute.
Seated assessor, is that correct?
That seated assessor gives the full power to that individual, including determining ultimately your overlay and having tremendous influence on the amount pulled forward from undesigned funds for your undesigned other revenue, I think it's line nineteen, looking at the tax commitment form. So that interface between your budget committee and your finance committee and this board will also be severely limited compared to, I'm guessing, I'm going to allow full disclosure, but even if he was not, the dedication of that boarding committee has been proven for decades. And it will be a significant alteration to the interchange between them and this town.
Okay, so what was Ron's position?
Ron was the agent, even though he was an employee.
What I think we need?
Probably right, and at a minimum, if you go with a seated assessor, if you do not have employee only, no contract status, you will have a completely untethered assessing situation. That individual will have significant, more genuine power. We assessors have power. That I think we're really not taking into consideration.
I think this is the wrong way to be doing this, to be fair to, I don't, whether we do it or don't do it, I don't think this would be your attempt.
I agree with you, but I still think we need an employee agent to give us that expertise, make the decision, have us review it like Ron did. I think that's the piece that we got ready that's really missing and tying our hands.
So I don't, I don't think that, that the individual we have right now, Josh, is prepared to provide that on a dedicated basis.
Is or isn't?
Is. So I don't, I don't think, we're not saying, okay, we're done with Josh. Josh is prepared to carry us forward in a contracted agent.
As an agent.
As an agent.
Okay.
Which is how it is today. And I'm not, I, I think he did a fantastic job and I think we can use some path forward. I don't think we should make any decisions changing how we operate as a board today.
I'm fine with that as long as we have the contracted agent. I don't think we can make it without.
I don't, I don't want to do it. I, I don't think, but I don't think we should, I don't think we should remove this option from the select board's elected position.
We have, we have Josh contracted to January, right? Would the option?
And I'm sure we could, if we felt the need to change that contract to what this is to a two-year commitment, to give us a committed timeframe.
Well, I would like to see someone reach out to him to see if he would do that extended commitment because I don't want to come January and be like, we have no.
Well, and I had a conversation with him today, we touched on it a little bit tonight, on even establishing policies on, instead of waiting a whole year to enter our deeds, as they come in, we process, that we're not at the bitter end going crazy trying to accommodate this. I think we need to put policies in place that were not here in the past that keep us forward.
When these tax bills go out, there's going to be a lot of people here and a lot of questions and we're going to need some ideas.
Absolutely.
Ronnie kept his going in all the time. That's, the change in policy was the failure of Parker appraisal. And the final observation is when you hire a new administrator, that individual will have a strong opinion on the possibility of an assessor.
True.
Whether it's seated by a contractor or employee.
True. Okay, so I'm gathering from the discussion within the board and from the comments in the community that this is not the time to propose this.
Agreed.
And that we will want to have a conversation with Josh about extending his contract.
Yep.
I applaud that and I think that it would take several conversations down the road to educate yourselves and us with Juanita with the technical terms. If you want to change down the road to really understand what you're getting into. But I think absolutely right, I think this is the wrong time to do it.
We've had significant change in the town in the past three months. I don't think we need to go through anymore right now.
So.
Do you frame the lines?
So there was no motion to accept this, this was a discussion, so we can...
Mark it off as discussed.
Disgust. Discussed and we approved nothing.
Yep.
But at the same time, we should, we should ask Josh perhaps to come and talk with us at our next meeting about extending the contract. Yes, does that look familiar or not?
Is it in the assessment? Is that a place where someone like Juanita could have a little written up suggestion of talking points and ways to proceed?
No prejudice implied.
Oh, no, I know.
I, I would rather, I would rather consult with our attorney.
Yeah.
Because our attorney has known none whatsoever in, in potential conflict of interest. One of the, one of my concerns always about working with Ronnie was as a person who lives in the community, there's always the potential for conflict of interest. So one of the, one of the advantages of having Josh work with us is that he's, he has nothing to gain and nothing to lose from any of his recommendations for the town. And I think that, I think that's clear. And of course, I would expect that Juanita is going to tell us what she thinks. As any member of the public is free to do so.
And we welcome the input.
Absolutely.
Well, what I guess, I'm sorry, I didn't say it well. It seems to me that you need to have that conversation with the attorney before you talk to John. You need to go into discussions like that with some tools to work with. It seems to me, watching the method of dealing with these things, is sometimes you're developing the policy or the contract or whatever on the fly at a meeting. You need to have those tools and information before you go into that meeting.
Well, I think we should reach out to him and see if there's an interest. And then, I presume there will be, but then we, from there, go to the attorney.
And we, honest with you, in the last three months, we've had several meetings with our attorney helping us with the separation agreement with administrator and other things. She has been fantastic. And some of the recommendations, not this particular one, have come from her. So we do need with her, she's available much more than any other attorney I've ever seen you so.
Good.
And we have our contract with her, with their firm, is unlimited. So we don't, we're not, we have the opportunity to run things by her at will and not, and not worry about facing the fluctuation of higher bills as we do so. I mean, that's significantly more than I'm sorry.
Was it Kristin who reviewed this contract initially or was it the other law firm?
Kristin. And I keep the information.
I mean, if you look at what we've gone through with this town, a new attorney, a new clerk, assessing agent, change in town administration, I mean, literally in the past two and a half months, we've had a significant change in this community. And we just need some steady sailing right now, to be frankly honest. We're past, you know, we're through commitment, we will have some abatements that we have to address, but I think that we've turned over our new pageage and I think we've got a very healthy path forward.
I, and I don't disagree with you a bit, I understand that completely. I'm just trying to say, you know, going forward, have the most benefit you can to work with to make decisions.
Thank you.
And I agree with you all a bit.
Max is here.
I am.
We're going to, item number three. Max is going to report. What's, what's happening, Max?
So.
Max, Max is from the Lake Coast Council of Democrats. Thank you.
Do your ice cream on my end?
No, I was running late, so I had to get that now. But thank you for having me first. Now I can't get to the ice cream stand, my door closed. So I've been doing the community residency partnership interviews. Actually, I should have looked at the agenda. Is this all things that I'm doing in town or is this just the community residency item?
Mostly the community residency. There's, there's something else that you might want to add.
Can you update on the ordinance as well?
Yeah, I just started meeting with the planning board on that one. We're just starting out. I gave them a draft of the shoreline zone ordinance. It's the first item, it's just the first draft, no comments yet. But yeah, community residency. I've done my interviews for officials that I would have liked to speak with because John does almost everything in town and I had to, I didn't have to do too many interviews. So I'm really also at the start of a public workshop where it's just an advertisement out for town saying, let's talk about this, let's hear what the officials said, let's go over some of these ideas that the state kind of gives as examples and what other towns have done. And anyone who's interested in the public just comes to the meeting and gives their thoughts.
And when would you suggest that we do this?
I'm rather free, I'm looking for dates that may not be a conflict or, so I can get at least maybe two or three we've noticed out to the public. I don't want to interfere with any select board meetings, planning board meetings, any community treaty.
There's a whole bunch of them.
Or any event you might be having coming up.
Well, election day.
Yeah, I know.
It gets, it gets a little busy. We, we are having, let's see, when is the?
We don't have, we haven't resolved whether we're in this school or workshop, so that's kind of.
Up in here?
Yes.
Is there like a, a ballpark idea for what week that might be happening?
Middle of the first year.
Would that work for you?
Yeah, the middle, can we, you do the middle, because they're the first or second weekend on.
Yeah, I'd do the middle part.
Monday night always worked for us.
Are your Mondays still free?
Uh, most Mondays are.
It looks like it's a holiday.
October is Columbus Day, I think.
Indigenous Christmas Day.
Sorry.
That's maybe Thanksgiving for me.
To me, it is sixteen.
That's a school board meeting. Well, we, if, if school, school board people might be.
Fifteen? Tuesday?
Are you back from Canada on fifteen?
Because Thursday, we already had a meeting, so we can't do it then. We do the fifteenth.
Fifteenth looks.
Back to work?
Yeah, fifteenth looks open, I can confirm that.
And would you like to do this at the firehouse and see if we can get a crowd?
That would actually be appreciated just because it is the emergency shelter and that was one of the big highlights that was kind of promoted by the, the point.
All right. Tracy, could you check with John and see if that date is free for the firehouse?
Yes.
And what time are you looking at?
Um, five or six o'clock, either of those, depends on.
Five thirty?
Five thirty is fine.
Five thirty sticks in people's heads.
Okay.
That's when we usually start things.
Okay.
Does five, show of hands, not any five thirty good, six thirty better, six o'clock better?
It's a workshop, they're going to go as they want.
Well, that's just, this is also why I want to make sure I put out a notice, a lot ahead of events, so if people are interested, they know a couple of weeks of events.
Will you be able to share some of the topics we're planning on discussing so you can put that into the agenda?
Yeah, sure. I'll, I have a little PowerPoint presentation I'm going to show, I'll kind of have.
But you would just put bullet points on what is going to be discussed in the agenda?
Highlights.
The highlights, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah. Pizza, whatever.
I need to have pizza.
Pizza's.
Yeah.
On your budget now.
All right.
Coffee and cookies, please.
Refreshments, I'll just have to make that one.
I make good combo bars.
Yeah, I was about to say, so I'll just chat with you outdoors to coordinate times and everything.
Okay.
You okay?
Fairly.
Um, do you have any, anything else that you want to toss out there?
Nope, planning board item was very brief that I've already discussed, CRP. Unless you guys have a question for me.
Okay. Ice cream, isn't it?
Uh, you were joining to Witch Springs?
Yes.
Sorry?
You were joining to Witch Springs?
Yes. And then I got, and I got a coupon for hamburgers that expires today, so I got it.
Which one's that one?
You all know one.
Make it around.
All righty, I'll see y'all later.
Bye, man.
See you later.
Um, where are we? Do we have any other unfulfilled business?
I don't believe so.
Okay. I don't have sure that I didn't.
I think we're, item number one.
On the new business, suggestions from the Bureau of Motor Vehicles. Did, did you have a deal with them?
It's been, it was behind, oh, the ordinance.
Over the last few days is the ordinance down. Okay. Would you need to read it?
Yes.
Maybe not word for word, but just hit the highlights of what the recommendations are. The motor vehicles did an audit and they had some suggestions for us. So let's see, I don't remember. So they're looking for us to, internal required contract review and evaluation to reduce risks associated with achieving environments following recommendations which are based on our findings of strength in the town of West Bath overall internal control. Written policies and procedures should be developed. Security practice should period out to be reviewed to reassess issues of general concern. Okay, that's that. So we have recommendations, written policies should develop for internal control.
Written policies should develop for internal control objectives to formalize the municipality's internal control policies and procedures in a written document that serves as guidance for existing and future employees and officials. Procedure upon, three municipal agents indicated she is not familiar with any formal written internal municipal policies or procedure. That's okay, we'll give them three weeks, we'll give you a pass. Discussion, written policies and procedures serve as a reference on the municipality's expectations for routine office functions. These written policies and procedures should outline the municipal internal controls as they relate to motor vehicle. Areas addressed may include cash handling, financial reporting, security and steward of assets, reconciling inventory and resolving variances, safeguarding duties, and other verification process for assurance. The development of the Secretary of State's formal policy prohibiting employees from processing transactions may be perceived as conflict of interest, meaning they encourage the municipality to adopt a familiar written policy for municipal staff. Two, security practices should periodically be reviewed to redress issues of general concern. Internal control objectives to safeguard being the assets, procedure current office security practices were discussed with the agent. Discussion, municipal office used a coded security system at the time of the audit review. One shared code was used among, among municipal standards, recommended codes be unique to individual clerks, whatever the security system reasonably shows allows its features. Ensures the access authorization is specific to individual personnel. Another A, storage and security. It just lets you check to see if doors and windows are locked, secure proper outdoor lighting. If an alarm system is placed, make sure it is working, keep money out of plain view. Money should be locked in a safe cabinet each day, keep stickers and validation stamps out of reach of the public. Trash and recycling of stuff should be positioned such that counter pay work stickers, checks, etc. cannot fall in by accident. Limit access to the storage area, limit personnel to lock keys. When personnel changes, if the individual has had access to the inventory, be sure to change the combination of vaults saves.
Yeah, it's pretty routine, as Julie and I have had conversations. I presume that you probably had a conversation with her as well. I asked Julie if she would provide us with some notes so that we could develop a policy. Mostly what they're concerned with is that all of the items related to registrations be under lock and key, which they currently are. They would also like to have individual key holders have individual codes so that once, I would have a separate code, Kathy would have a separate code, so that once, once the code is entered in, the security company can identify which of us accessed the building at what time.
I think it's a great idea, because we have to change the code without changing staff, and I think that we should do that.
And the security company can do this, apparently.
Has it ever been changed, has it been?
I don't think so.
Uh, no.
And I think we should, I mean, with the changing of the guard, we should certainly have-
I agree.
A change of-
Within recent memory, it has been the same. So-
It's another grown-up procedure. It's another grown-up procedure.
That's, this is the, this is the way of the 21st century, everything has a procedure. So, Julie will get us suggestions, we'll get a real written policy so that we can have that in place and make sure that the Department of Motor Vehicle stuff is well protected, because it's valuable. So-
I think you guys have a good process for that. It's in the vaults, you have to recycle them, feed away from everything you're doing, so I think it's-
Yeah.
I think you've got some good procedure in place.
The setup, the setup is, is fair and safe, it's just not big. So, we can take care of that. Okay, so, I was ready for number three. To review the options for town administration. So, we have had some discussion about how you see, within the, within the process of working through this stuff. One of the suggestions that we had obtained along the way was to have an interim town administrator. We've been almost two months, and I'm wondering if my original suggestion is now, now extraneous. We shouldn't just simply go into a search for the real person? We were not fortunate enough to have any proposals come to us and suggestions that were made for somebody who might be an interim. And we have had information from both Eaton Peabody that does searches, and, and I apologize, I have not, had not until today been able to take that with the person who does this with the MMA Municipal Association. So, this, Eaton Peabody and MMA Municipal, both do professional services, and they have quite an extensive service that they offer.
So, I guess I have a, what's the harm in listing this job on the MMA site prior to spending $8,000 or $66,000 to do so? Why would we not try, now that we can officially advertise this job? I think we should try that first before we can start spending this kind of money. That's just my opinion, but I think we've done nothing, and we couldn't do anything until we officially had a separation. But I'm not, I'm not a fan of having people come to us if they're interested first and trying to- We could result in that if we don't see anything, maybe we set a timeframe of three weeks or something if we have no response. But I, I don't, I'm not sure I want to- You know, and I look at this, MMA Municipal says for a town manager, that's not what we're looking for.
So, I, the position between town manager and, that's a general thing that you would do for any town administrator or town manager. The town administration is just, is personal.
I just want to make sure that we are, they understand what our goals are, we are- They follow our community. And want to behave like a small community.
They understood that. We also, we also are a small community with, we are complex. And you may have noticed, municipal government is not a simple thing anymore. David?
I think we could probably go more in a follow group of hiring a town administrator, just like advertising MMA or elsewhere, it's kind of local, and getting word out to the association of town administrative managers, administrators, their network, and see who might be interested, before we go to follow group, hiring someone to do the search for us. My other suggestion is, when you get to reviewing the top candidates for this position, is that you include a member of the school board on that committee to hire. They are part of the town government, they are part of town, and I think a member of the school board, if it's huge or members who would have served on a hiring committee, should be involved with this process.
So, I think we should perhaps write up, and maybe we have our town attorney write up the job description that we post on MMA and advertise it as well.
As well as the, the association.
Well, and you know, and you reach out to people like Josh, who are traveling in the inner circles of towns, and see who do they know that, who they can poach. Well, it happens.
I'm not afraid.
If someone that you know on the manager's web server, they will pull from the MMA website, and they will circulate it amongst all of the managers within this area is a paper. As well as just putting a simple ad in the local paper, you know, on our website for anybody else who might be interested.
It's hard to put an ad in our local paper.
Right, I mean, you get time.
We only do it two days, we do that.
But we have time to do that, we have time to do that now.
Yeah, we better have a separation here, so now we can process and move forward. I, I think we should try it holistically first.
Last time we did a search for town administrator, we got quite a few-
Right.
Applications, and it was just an admin paper.
But I think that-
I think I did some of it. And, yeah, but it wasn't, we didn't do a fourth one or anything, I think we got, what, six or seven?
Including, and maybe the school board might help. Bring the town, move together.
Well, then, that, that, if, if we're going to do our home, a home roam search first, then who, who besides members of the select board? Last year we, last, six years ago, when was that? It was a while, or six years ago. We had the select board and John Bean acting because he was the fire chief, and a, and a member of the public as well. So, we have a suggestion from the public that we include a school board member. Any other suggestions as to general public?
Well, I think we should reach out to Kristen and have her get the job descriptions quickly she can to us for a town administrator.
Okay, I can, I can-
Get it posted on MMA.
I think it doesn't hurt to have Jonathan or Julie or-
Sure.
Someone from the town off with, I mean, that's people that would be working with them.
And they did the interview process for the town clerk as well, but I think it's, that's who's going to be with them every day. I think it's important that they hand them what.
So, select boards, members of this, a member designated by this school board?
Yeah.
And the town staff? And a member of the town staff?
I would say both town staff.
We don't want to make it too heavy.
Right.
I think you don't want to have much more than four, or probably five. Otherwise, it gets very complicated. So, the last process was hard for me because I was new, and you don't want to go against the other people on board. I'm just wondering if there should be some rating system so that you don't have to say in front of everybody. Because I think it's difficult, I think there should be some rating system, you know, who would your first choice be? Who would your second choice, and then someone to go through those and determine. What? Would you be willing to develop such an?
Sure.
Such an instrument?
Sure.
I just think it's, I think it's hard sometimes for people, and I'm not the only one, I'm sure, you know, Jonathan's kind of quiet too, so I think if you had a rating source or system versus, really didn't care for David.
That's hard to say.
Yeah.
I would hope so.
Oh, you can spell your name.
Yeah, especially if you've got two people over here, and I'm sitting here, and I don't like this guy at all.
Right.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's a good idea. You have good administrative experience, if you could develop some kind of instrument, maybe based on what Kristen develops as a kind of-
Yep.
Ideal world job description?
Yep.
And then, what I, what I, why don't I ask Kristen, I can send her an email tonight or tomorrow morning, asking her to give us some examples of really good job descriptions. We can then decide what we think is important in a job description. And then, from that, we can, you can, we together, you and me, can develop a kind of, kind of rating system.
Like experience and prior experience in government, who we rate as a one?
Right, right. Or who we really just don't care for. We're all saying we don't care for the same individual. One of the-
Right.
Input from the community, because we're all going to have to live with this person for long. Any suggestions?
Just be thorough.
Yes, I agree.
Take your time.
Yeah.
A week or two compared to the influx of waves that we've all experienced over the last year, it's nothing quite as small.
It is.
And you've managed for two, three months, you can manage another two, three months.
I just don't want to put the pressure on Julie.
No, no, but I mean-
No, no, I know.
I don't want you to, but personally, I don't really want to hire someone to-
Yes, I've heard of the choice.
We need to, we need to make sure that we've paid over our last administrator before we hire them. We're as close to, and that we get the best person who's available at the time.
Well, and that, that really congeals with the town. I think it's very important that we have harmony.
Yeah, one of the things that I just made, you're concentrating on a local area. Two things about that, what's wrong with not expanding your search line, and someone coming into this community? Two, and the second thing is, have you got a process in mind for actually vetting the credentials that they give you and getting personal references?
We did follow, we did follow those procedures, if people will have references, we can check references. If we decide that we need to really do that, MMA does some of that work, they can, we can-
We can consult that.
We can consult a security firm. And typically, we ask them to bring at least three references with them, and a lot of times they're written references from individuals that they chose to ask. I think the only thing we need to do is, and I hate saying this, is follow up and just make sure that they're really recommending, and it's not something that's written by-
Yes.
AI. Yeah.
In vetting credentials, we collectively have done a very poor job of vetting credentials. I mean, it has hit us hard.
Well, if you look at how this town has evolved over the past five years, and what we're recording this evening, I presume that most towns have this similar service that will allow us to view these individuals in action and see how they coordinate with their meetings and how, and those, I think that will give you certainly some insight as to the type of individual they are, in addition to the regular references that we're looking for, moving to dig a little bit deeper beyond a paper reference.
And there's always Google. One of, one of the potential candidates who submitted an application looked really, really good, and I Googled them and discovered that they had been arrested for domestic violence sometime in the recent past. So, that person was immediately eliminated.
I mean, for $35, we do extensive tenant background checks. And the tenant should be doing at least that, which we do when we place a tenant for the peace and comfort and safety of the other people in our building.
I, I think having-
We should be doing the same.
MMA has an extensive background, we can, we, I would have a problem farming that out as a neutral entity, having them look into evaluating what they find. They may have more knowledge of where to look than we do.
Well, $35, we have it all anyway, so however you do it.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
I agree.
Do diligence. Do we have other new business?
I have a question for you. You have your state valuation, is that new business?
I haven't seen it yet.
The three of you have not seen your preliminary.
No.
No.
Okay, I touched base with Josh briefly, and I made the assumption that, because he and I have touched base that you have it.
We have not seen it. What do you think?
I would love to give a condensed view, and then my question is going to be, if there's any follow up on the possible remedy sought for the condition of the resulting degree of adequateness. So, let me shut my mouth, but when you say new business, the state valuation is here.
Okay. Would you be tempted, we put that on the agenda for next, for the next meeting? What would you like to do? You, make your comment now.
Thank you. I would at least like to make the observation, because as you have said in Milbury, it's incredibly relevant.
Yeah, okay.
It is showing in a year after a revaluation- It is showing in a year after a revaluation is completed, this is not typical, all in caps, your non-waterfront and your waterfront are ten percent apart in how that audit of assessed value and sales value have returned. I look to how MMA revenue service has heavily weighted the average away from the median. We owe them a dub gratitude because they had doing this in a one-year study instead of a two-year combined study. But next year, I don't see how they can avoid a two-year combined study. And we need to be prepared that the percentages of our reimbursements could also be impacted again. So, thank you for letting me make note of my analysis of your preliminary state valuation for twenty-five and then next year as, next year, it feels like next year, sorry, ladies, next meeting, I, I feel it's timely to have an agenda reference to where you are. Are you considering, continuing to pursue potential steps? Have you decided no further pursuit of something even in its simplest form?
In regards to?
To Packer Appraisals, non-provision of the work product that we pay for.
The, I, I can say very little, but I will say that recourse is being sought.
So, it is not completely abandoned?
It is not.
Is that a fair way for me to play back to you?
Hundred percent.
Thank you.
It is being sought.
Thank you.
I think one thing we can say is that our term stands.
I hope she gets, Kristen gets this immediately.
We can make sure that she does.
And I will volunteer, I've been assessing Woolwich long enough, if she would like a one-on-one conversation about the state valuation itself, I would welcome a conversation.
Thank you. So, wondering how do you think it's going to affect our county tax based on that evaluation?
Well, with the state valuation, I mean, West Bath is very low in terms of the numerical standing within the county, but it, it solidifies the county's demand on you. It doesn't in any way lessen the county's demand on you, but it, even if you came at below the hundred percent, that would matter because it's going to be corrected to where you should be at a hundred percent. Where it's going to damage us, we, the community, is we should be able to anticipate that our reimbursement for our homestead, our veterans exemptions, full exemptions being granted to the taxpayers, our reimbursement for tree growth, if we end up with a solifan, reimbursement for a solifan, it should be at a hundred percent for several years at minimum after the completion of a revaluation. Looking at this, I would be shocked if we are not exposed next year to a potential decline below the hundred percent where we can claim a ten percent back above, so maybe we could hang on by the skin of our teeth next year, but we're not looking at a ten or fifteen year expense before our reimbursements will be crippled. So, your standing with state is going to be adjusted without regard to whether you're a hundred percent, above a hundred percent or below a hundred percent. Your standing within your tax obligation for the county is not, because it's adjusted based on the certified ratio, just as we adjust a assesses within the community, the state adjusts the municipalities within the county so that the parity is maintained.
But if we experienced an overvaluation of the waterfront, everyone being classified as deep water, does that not sway?
It doesn't ultimately sway account tax, it continues to bridge tax base and it will continue to diminish your certified ratio, meaning that your reversibles will be damaged and the percentage of your exemptions granted to your taxpayers will be diminished. But the offset is to your standing within the county, the parity is maintained by the process for the share. So, in other words, Pittsburgh has been the third most valuable for the twenty-two years I assessed Pittsburgh, Totsom is above us, Bath is above Totsom, and with the three of us, actually very close together. Fortunately for Woolwich and West Bath, our county tax is painful, but significantly lower, so this isn't influencing the county tax share as such. And even if you go lower or above, that is modified just as we do within the town as certified ratios types.